Hi, this is Eric. I'm here, so we're going to call this meeting over. And we'll go as well, I think we got a reason for the first one, start.
Okay, but. Amen, Father, we thank you for this day, thank you for all the many blessings given us, thank you for this great city. We get to live in it, nice that you bless us, watch over us throughout this meeting, throughout this nature, watch over and hold it. Just all say, lead down the race, and all we did, just made with grace.
Amen. First, on the deal that they voted here, to lead on. On Butler Avenue, SN A to SN F. Eric, what do you think?
Yeah.
That look, do you got anything to say about that?
No, I don't think we even had a towel about it.
Okay.
It's good, uh, if y'all approved that, we also need to approve the, uh, the splitting of the oversized lots into the, uh, three lots, combining two lots and make it three lots total, and then approve it.
Do they have to do that, or they just have to not have to accept the, the order? I don't find it.
Yeah, they would have to not accept the order.
Yeah, yeah, so if they're happy with it, they want to take it back.
We're going to vote to read them at first.
Yep.
Uh, y'all see, I'm. So, I'm hoping by key, say, with Kevin, Dave, any other questions, discussion, all in favor?
Ah.
Any votes, like, curious? All right, I would say, but I'll put you next on the zoom. Come up here, keep coming up here, where are y'all been? Tell us what you've seen.
Well, I'm pretty sure y'all are aware of the petition that y'all received, correct?
Right.
Uh, this basically what the petition is stating here, with the lights and the speed bumps, uh, that's the copy of the petition here, and it was just something that, uh, I jumped on board with all the people in the community there. This accident waiting to happen, I dread that it happened, I prayed it'd happen, but I'm older, pretty much, about seventy-five, eighty percent of the time, and I'm seeing a lot of traffic, there's been a lot of close calls, uh, so that's pretty much it, uh. I hope you guys can vote in, and I appreciate it, you do, you do, you're committing to a great service, uh, to protect the people in the community as well, so I appreciate it.
You want to watch, Andrew?
Well, it's, it's, the lights are really not as important as the speed bumps, uh, and what I saw ain't but one light close down by Bean House, that's pretty much it, the lights are in good condition. It just, right now, that neighborhood over the last ten years is getting very, uh, really diverse, there's a lot of kids, a lot of families moving in that neighborhood, and some of them don't even have a piece of even riding their bikes down the street, you got sixty, seventy-year-old women that walk the street, that's free to get hit, so that's pretty much, uh, the most important thing out of that.
All right, and I won't say anything, I just want to let you know that, uh, we don't do no speed bumps, so we don't, we don't penalize them for it.
Right. Is there a reason why this will put speed no speed bumps?
I don't mind speed bumps, I don't want to. I don't know, like, what's the main complaint, like, at the intersection, or?
It's standing street, nineteen, so it's standing street all the way from, uh, from the top of Park Hill all the way down to, uh, Bunker Street, that's a su- that's a super speed zone.
Yeah, comes all the way down, you kind of leave them all the way down low court.
Yeah, but not, well, when you come through the parks, or top of the hill, and come down, it's standing street, uh.
Okay.
Exactly.
All right, do you have anything else, Eric?
I just, it, what's the reason that you cannot allow speed bumps in a dangerous zone like that?
It's like a stopper, I'm sure, the PD's here, enforcing the law, so.
They run the stop signs, Kevin.
Yeah, that's what you have to do.
How hard are they ever to see the cops post up over there, and I don't think cops would be post up over there, police post up over there. What about when they're not there, that's the most important thing.
But speed bumps, you gotta realize what a speed bump does to a bridge.
You're talking two inches, I got to pick up the speed bumps.
You're talking about somebody's life. The speed bump is going slowly, let's be with it, let's surprise them, it's going far enough, that's what we gotta realize about speed bump.
Well, the speed bumps, like I say, ain't but two and a half inches tall, just as much as a pothole over there, uh, I don't think it would be that much, I'm not talking about four-inch speed bump, they got four-inch, five-inch speed bumps. Speed bumps that I'm acquiring about is two and a half inch speed bumps, and I got to pick up it off, sir.
Take speed off, sir.
All right, I didn't know. Looks like, uh, Laura, are you showing?
Yeah, I think I know everybody, um, I just want to enormously say I apologize for the house over on the floor, three items, and the situation that we're in. I do want to say, in twenty twenty-two, that is when the house burned down, it was not, it was made, we didn't know whose fault it was, so we did get somebody in, and it took that whole year for us to be able to, which was about four months ago, so that's a year that we were out, not able even move the truck, that was in the driveway of that, just in the garage. So, we weren't able to do anything, that's one time, and then after you guys gave us the six months, we do, we do appreciate these six months, but it's just gonna take, I know that you might not think a lot for them, but there is, it's tedious work, and I will then explain, you know, exactly what it is, but we honestly want this house to stay in the historic part of New Haven. That is the characteristic of the house, that's the love of the house, I grew up in the house, every one of y'all probably knows me and my family, we grew up, my daughter grew up in the house. This is something that we feel strongly about holding on to, it is a shell of a house now, but we did have plans in December to start work, and those didn't get started because they got the funds back, and that was mainly because of you guys, but honestly, what we want to do is make that house, and we don't want to be, I've talked to my neighbors, Bob, we, we, and we are okay, but he was, he said, I really want her Caitlin Brandon to live here, so the people that we have talked to at first, you know, they were like, oh, good, and I did not know, six months ago, I recently had, I recently had my leg taken off me, and that was a big struggle for my whole family. Now, all this has happened, and we really want to take revenge of the next six months, because we have torn down, and previously taken down the house, to where it just keeps the shell of it, and it looks horrible now, I apologize to you, you want to the neighborhood, and if we have to go ahead and take it down, it's not gonna be something that my daughter wants to do, this is something she wants to hold on to, and I really want you guys to feel deep in your heart, because I lived in that neighborhood, I don't know, we built the house, it took us two years to get that house built, but I honestly want to say that that neighborhood, the North Side neighborhood, has been my life the whole time, and it's been her life, we're, I'm not scared over there, I mean, I'm more scared now in the country than I am in the city, so, I mean, it's really a place that I want her to have the growth, we're trying, they're trying to have a baby, so we're trying to get them so that they can enjoy the house, and we've problem, no problems with, no problems with any kind of amount of money, because we can do whatever it takes to get it done. They're wanting to do a more tedious look, they want to take, at first, they were doing it on their timeline, if you guys can give us a little more time, they're gonna take it a step up, and they're gonna do more, they're gonna, because Laura got the people hired, I think you have the agenda, my daughter and my son-in-law are here to talk about any kind, that's what he does for a living, he's willing to take more off time, so that we can get this thing built up, and this can be a house that they can be proud of, I don't want them to live anything that they can't be proud of, I'm willing to stand in there now, I've, I've been over there, I was disgusted when I saw some of the things over there, and I said to myself, I know why everybody's so upset, so I went to my neighbors, I went to Frankie, and Bob, I went to everyone over there, and I said, you're the people that are gonna have the problems with this much, because it's gonna affect your, our, your home, and we had long talks, we spoke about it, Bob said, I'd love for Caitlin and Brandon to be here, but we're here because he knows us, I mean, Frankie's saying, like, everybody over there, I know some have had really problems, but I want to assure you guys that I'm personally gonna take care of it, if you let us do this, I'm gonna make sure that they get this done. And if you want to talk to them like any of this, why they haven't done, it took a long time to take the thing down, love, it really did.
It was very tedious work, with having to be able to preserve the actual historic part of the house, most of it had to be done by hand, that's why it took so long with actual demolition. Um, the long part of it is done now, everything else is pretty much, like, building up, we're ready to start building up, and we are a hundred percent positive, we can have it burned down and in the drive on the end of this month. We're, this is not, we, we've done a lot of running to do this as well, and if we have to tear down that part, all that money we've been into, it is basically just got thrown away.
The meeting is, it's a thing where we all receive, we're in line there today, and what your options are, of, of, uh, the meeting was held in August, five months ago, it was supposed to give them six months to add, uh, that meeting could happen, if you need to hear, it's a lawsuit or something, so I think we're gonna take an official action to do it, or, uh, do a mission, you have to have those, uh, anticipated, or ask, before you set the budget, can't vote for the lawsuit, we need to have a meeting, which we did, uh, and I would consider, insist that with the knowledge that y'all are pretty pissed, and I thought we already did set up six months, and we don't want this moved forward, it's been a bloody waste of money, to be, uh, to where it was held, if they can approve it, uh, I believe they have six months to add, probably they can approve, Eric, correct?
Yeah, probably a deal for a hundred ninety.
So, I understand, you're, you're free to ask, if you're just asking Eric versus my staff, but I think your two choices today are either to send this for a hearing, and you can do whatever you want to do against them, or you can vote here with more time, and that's really the only choice that you can make today.
Please understand that I'm honest, a hundred percent, I really do want to see this happen to this house, and I think everybody on North Side would much rather have the house that was built in the nineteen thirties there, and can be the historical part, which is already, I think, New Orleans already voted that in, talked to Billy Jean, talked to several people, this is something that New Orleans gonna be, you know, they're gonna, the face up is to support New Orleans, and that's exactly what we're trying to take this house, which was remodeled in the eighties, we're taking it straight back to the nineteen thirties, same original four land, everything just the same. So we're trying to use everything, the same bricks, we're trying to do everything, that's the characteristics that my child wants, I mean, she, we lived in it, she lives in it, that's what we wanted to do, before we, when they, when it burned, listen, we were just getting things up to date, so then we're gonna be in start construction on the inside of it, because there were some things that needed update, this man come in, we didn't know this until a year later, but he came in and his truck, he'd wired his truck to something that your wirehouse do, but he didn't listen to it right, we had no idea, his truck blew up, and that's a big, that's what happened to that house, we had no insurance on it at the time.
It's in its worst state that it will look, it only goes up from here, the projects like this, if you don't know anything about construction projects, this is the worst state that it's going to look, it go, uh, I can't stress enough, it goes up from here, it's, it never gets better, this is the worst.
So what was the original delay?
The, the original late was, we didn't know what happened, the fire department didn't have an exact amount of what happened, so I talked to a local over here, and he sent me to someone that said, we'll get somebody in, and we'll let them book, because this, this guy told us he had insurance, told us everything was good, we find out, no insurance, no anything, so we're just trying to find out what happened to the house, it took us over eight months to just get it, get someone to say they were coming to do the investigation, I think you were called, we're not ready, when we got the guy from Two Blue, he found us a person named Grenada, they came down, came several times down, because they didn't, they couldn't understand it, there was wires on top of the house, we didn't know if the wire to the house to the pole outside was the cause, my father thought that's where it was, so we were told many times that, hey, you need somebody in here, you need, I mean, even the lawyer in New Haven said, let's do this, well, I'm gonna get somebody out here, the man from Grenada came, and the very last minute, I think, because the attorney called today, the very last minute, and he said, look, I want you to know that this man had wire that you wire house from, in his truck, and his truck blew up, and it caused your house on fire.
Well, did he have a permit? Did he have it?
No.
No, he wasn't doing any wiring to the house, he was working the lady, it's, he was on the, he was, he worked, he works for the whole neighborhood, he cleans up, cleans gutters, gets all those things, so he works for everybody, this has never happened before. We used him several times to do miscellaneous objects around the house, we used to have time for.
Why was, still brown, Marshall, my call?
They were, they were, so, it happened first week of August of twenty twenty-two, we did our investigation, uh, I went ahead and called the state fire marshal in for a second opinion, they came in, and we were done with our investigation within a couple of weeks, and we said that, the, you know, we, as a, as a, as a city investigator, and also as a state, we don't say that caused your fire, we give you a, an area of origin, and then whether we think it's intentional or accidental, so our area of origin was around the vehicle area in the garage, that was our area, and we felt accidental, and that's what the state said also, so from there, then, it's up to them to take care of the rest of it, if they want another investigator, that's up to them, I didn't even know another investigator had been called, they never contacted us.
Wait, I'm sorry, Mark, I'm worried, I don't know if you knew, I said, I don't know if I talked to you or the other Mark.
You talked to me.
Right, and I told you that we were getting somebody, I mean, do you remember that?
Yeah, you said that you were trying to contact somebody, but I had never, the investigator didn't even call and get our report, or ask what we thought, or anything, so I didn't even know anybody else had looked at it, but how long it takes for another investigator, that's a private investigator, and we don't, we have no control over that, but, yeah, but the state and our findings were both in line with each other on what we thought the area of origin was.
No electricity in the house, we don't have nothing, and then the wires on top of the house, that was one thing that made us really feel like there was another problem, I mean, it really made us think, that, honestly, the lights that my dad had, you know, back in the seventies, it made us think that goes, oh, wires are going across the parkport area, we did not know what it was, and he just really wanted us to, and even the attorney here, New Orleans, said, look, you need to go and have an investigator come down, and let him do your own investigation, he came down twice, I've got all the reports, if you need to see it, um, he came down, and he said, look, and then after he started thinking about, he said, took engineered by claims and everything, that's kind of something I didn't understand, but then when he told us, hey, this is what it is, the muff leg, we were with you guys, he didn't, it's the hat.
Could y'all explain since the six months ago, in detail, what progress y'all have made so far?
Um, I don't know if you may have a chance to, like, go out there and actually see the house. I've driven by. Yeah, uh, we tore that whole side section down, then we ended up, like, going inside and get the brick area, but, um, in the first year, really all we wanted to keep was the brick anyway, now that's what we got it down to, so, uh, we're really just waiting to be able to build that.
And it was a thirty-five hundred, fully furnished worth at home, it wasn't just a small home that you can just go in and demolish with machinery, it was, yes, a part of it was able to get done with machinery, but most of it had to be done by hand, and that's really is what took the most time to be able to preserve a historical bridge, which is the most supportive part to us, so that's really what took the longest.
What, you know, so you have a very detailed, very ambitious plan, which I appreciate, Sam, um, what happens if you don't have this January thirty-first goal done, or if it's partially done, or if it's not done at all?
I can guarantee you that it is gonna be done, we were actually going to start in December, but we were unable to pull the permit, the guy that works with my husband's crew, he's ready, we are literally just waiting on the approval to pull the permit. Uh, I, I am very, very confident that it will get done.
So, if, when we said, uh, six months ago, or five months ago, and we set our expectations, and you evidently know a lot about what's going on, why didn't you not tell us then that that wasn't realistic?
Well, we didn't know the extent of it until we actually got in there, we thought we were going to be able to do more with the machinery, which would have took way less time and kept us on schedule, so it really got.
Okay, why, why did you not come back to us when you determined that, because I go by there at least once a month to see the progress of the home, and the last three months that I've been by there, it looks exactly like it looked three months ago to me, and there was no, no change at all.
Well, the crew that we were having to come in to help us with the actual build up, they weren't booked out, they were supposed to be able to come with us in December, and that is, we got everything done up until that point, which is the framework. While we didn't come to you, I apologize for that, this is the first time we've ever dealt with anything like this, we thought that we had the six months, no problem, as long as we are, you know, moving in the right direction, getting it up in that timeframe, we would be able to, you know, get a little more time to get it up, this is the first time I've ever dealt with anything like this, so I do solely apologize for not coming to you ahead of time and telling you this.
So, you, you just told our mistake that you guaranteed that it'll be done by the end of January, so what if your crew were, what if that doesn't work out in January?
If it doesn't work out, aren't you agreeing that it doesn't work out, that we will go with, we'll tear it down, that's what we're.
So, if we set a hearing for February? You gotta give a permit to do it, or don't do it.
Can they, can they, can you let your work, just, on it? Sport working, which is.
Uh, about timeframe, about, about narrow of the timeframe in which they have to act.
I used to say, they'll be, they'll be back in the thirty-first.
Well, let me ask you this, no, let me ask you this, did you want them to come to you every month, or come to the parks, or come to?
What we want is, see, I was, we want to show the proof that y'all say y'all can do this, that in January, y'all saying, slap, and the way y'all opportunity from that.
Um. The framing completed.
House wrap all, everything in the drop.
By the end of January.
About the end of January, framed up, house wrapped in the drop, and as you can see in our action plan, from there, that is what we set for everything.
And he's having those contractors seem to do, I mean, I don't want to say that, but they are promising this at the end of January, that they're gonna, I'm very confident in the end of January, we will have this framed up, we got the lumber all the way towards the project to get full, get it started, so the.
Wait.
Hundred ninety minutes.
I know, Eric, I don't know why the board gives a issue with conditions, you know what I mean, obviously, they're doing that.
I don't, I don't know if you, I mean, I guess you pay them, but I don't, I don't know if, but.
I mean, what's also by agreement, you know, they're agreeing that they would accept that.
Yeah.
Well, so we have to give them notice, and we can have another hearing in February.
And the typical public, you can't vote for lawsuits until you have official notice for a public.
And I think, I mean, ideally, everyone wants the original property restored, we're worried that it's, that it's not gonna happen, so, I mean, we can set the hearing, and they can, you know, choose to put your money into it or not, you know, I think if the framing were done, and it were in the dry, I think we would be satisfied with that, I do with that personally.
Well, the problem is, if we issue a permit without restrictions, that.
It's got a hundred ninety minutes left.
And we're fine with ours.
Yeah, we're fine with the restrictions, we can get that framed up and in the dry by the end of January.
Unless it comes up, um, well, yeah, but, um, um, we're supposed to start expecting, so.
Here's Eric, um, just to make a comment, uh, I am actually a neighbor of the property, um, I'm a self-licensed license general contractor, most y'all know that, um, I've been to a lot of these meetings, as y'all all know, I've watched y'all go through this process with a lot of people, um, what I've noticed over the years is that no one else has put any effort whatsoever into attempting to do anything, you know, and one or two have self-demolished it just to save the money of not being built on their tax bill, but no one else has made, in my view, and, you know, I've been to a hundred and ninety-something of these meetings, uh, I haven't seen anyone put forth the effort that they have, uh, I do operate it on, on, on daily basis, I did see them out there doing investigative work, trying to figure out what caused it, I did see them tearing it down by hand, and I do know that as a contractor, if I were to own this particular property, in the same circumstance, would happen to me, uh, what I, what I hate to see happen to someone is that, me as a professional, I know what it takes to, to rebuild a house that has gone through that, and if it were me, I would have came to y'all, and I would have asked for a year, and I'm a professional, and I would have asked for a year, um, there are a lot of people that aren't professional contractors, that are, are really ambitious, and they, they get things done quicker than they can, I live in reality and know that that process is a year-long process, and it has their neighbor, or someone that's seen them put in the effort to try to restore that house, and, and in fact, that they have the, the bridge, there are architectural details in that house that dated to a very specific timeline, and it matches houses and other areas of the town, you know, something that I do as a builder is, is, when I'm building new houses, try to make them look like old houses, try to make them fit into the neighborhood and town. So, you know, I would say that, I feel like as a professional, them saying, you know, guarantee it'll be done in thirty days, is they're putting their foot in the mouth, their mouth, and I'm probably just putting that, but at the same time, having seen them put in effort, and actually trying to accomplish something that's pretty good for the neighborhood and the town, it, it would make me, you know, happy to see someone have an opportunity to do something right for a change, and, you know, if y'all needed some technical assistance, when they recall and what to do, you know, there are people that you could reach out to, to let us pick that up, and I wouldn't mind at all partially helping them with contacts, and, and being a good neighbor and trying to help them with this process that y'all here have been experiencing, so. Uh, I just think we'll have to, obviously, y'all have kind of set precedent before, but if going through these meetings, I've noticed that the precedent that was set before was kind of based off of the same, and not to down y'all, but y'all aren't builders and developers, the precedent that was set before was based off of a lack of understanding what it takes to redo these things to begin with, and I think that if everyone understood the process a little more when these first started coming up, y'all would have been discussing longer timelines, and specific, you know, written courses of action, you know, and that's in the future, something that y'all might want to consider, coming up with a course of action that you could give to people to say, these are the steps, and the things you need to do, and set precedents, that if you don't get these milestones, then we will move forward with the process, but, uh, anyway, I say that all the same, I am a neighbor, and, uh, I appreciate what they've done, and, uh, they're, they're trying to do something that most people don't want to put in the money at the time, doing it as a contractor, and someone that, that cares for the historical significance of the things that is found, uh, I appreciate it.
I think.
This is from, uh, a lot of, a lot of the barriers, you know, a lot of people say, I want to build a family house, and, 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 the big thing that all, I'm sorry, because Eric has, they have to present an actual plan, that's, uh, totally, you know, and, and, so I'd like to, Eric, you versus that, and the second issue is, they also have to demonstrate some ability to actually feasibly make that happen with a reasonable amount of time, not just a desire for one day, but, but, actually, just, yeah, needs to improve, and, 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 so, if Eric knows anything, either, I'd like to board to be aware of what the situation is.
They, uh, I mean, it will be brought up, but it's just, it's kind of funny, that's gonna be up to the board to decide, maybe y'all, if you have time, or y'all set the, or prepare the way before, I don't want to say is them dump money into this thing, quit, and then y'all.
But that's the main worry, is that, that's put money in.
Yeah.
They've already dumped the money, I'm going to.
The money's gone.
About, I mean, you don't, and, but, it is, they have a two thousand dollar loan that they can get from the, and I, also, still, I can, uh, for it, will be, I mean, these kids, what they want to do is get in this house, and have a family in it, and a young couple like them too, growing up, me growing up in that neighborhood, and then will grow their children up, it means a lot, but not that.
We've had several people come before us, in the same state that y'all, money's no problem, this year, we're gonna bring it to the black market in January, so, in the January, we don't do it back here, but then we still, we want to get some heat. I don't see why we don't.
Eric, somebody, who's pushing the board?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay, who's gonna be the, the license?
They can, it's their house, they can build it, that's, uh.
Should they be tested?
Mm-hmm.
All right, and, and, with respect to their purchase of materials and all, have you found that? All right, and, and with respect to their purchase of materials and all, have you found that?
Yeah, they sent me a text about how much they spent this stuff.
Okay, so this is what they told you?
Yeah.
All right, I'd like your opinion on one other thing. They said they can have this probably in the January, is that peaceful and reliable from this point? Do you have, is the plan, do you have the plan that they have?
Yeah, I do, I do. The framing of having the building in drive by the end of January, I don't, I mean, I really don't. I mean, unless you get a crew on it and they work, you know, five days a week till the end of January, you know, I don't...
What would be a more reasonable time?
Probably two and a half months to get it right then.
I do want to make the board aware, you know, I think that the request was set for hearing, which is not a part of setting a configuration, but...
But one thing I wouldn't want the board to do is extend the hearing out and then they put, you know, twenty thousand dollars in, you know? If you don't extend the hearing out, I wanted to extend it out for like a year, you know, to give them time to finish it. But that's up to y'all, you know?
If, if we were to set this thing for public hearing in February, is there anything you, a list that you could provide that this is what I need to see from you before I will... That, that, maybe not that they would give more time, that's up to them, but at least tell the board that I think they have an actual plan and I will extend that.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that, but just what about the permit? You know, we issue the permit or not?
Well, what I'm asking right now is, is if we don't issue a permit now, if we address this in February, or possibly go for demolition, is there additional information they can provide to you so we can give better advice to the board about their ability to go for it?
I mean, we could go over this, you know, their, their list of stuff and, you know, maybe look and see if all the timeframes have worked out. But if you don't let them start now, is there, you know, people that's gonna help them or are they gonna be wrong?
They will.
You know, something like that, you know?
Do you have any concerns right now about your ability to go for it?
Just that January, I was gonna think.
There's the date.
Yeah, just the date.
But if we have to end the drive by the end of January, would be good.
And I heard that we had to come in to help our career because they've done it before. That's the only reason why we have that timeframe is because that's what was told to us.
Yeah, they did get it up by February, third, fourth.
He did.
How much?
He told us that we would get it up by the end of December.
And I think we've all, you know, the whole time, I think all anybody's wanted is visible progress. And it's difficult to the naked eye to see that during the past six months, understand why that is. But I mean, if a frame actually goes up and we can see our work on it.
And this is, that's the point that we're at right now, to be able to go up in peace and... The hardest were, the hardest part was getting it down. Like I said, it was a big home, fully furnished, and we were trying to preserve the brick. That was very tedious work. It wasn't like just coming in, getting the machine, let's tear down, let's, uh, take off, we're done. It, it wasn't that.
And I'm interested, doctors appearing, they're possibly being, him, or Johnson talking to you about helping us because that would be, if we might, if we have to take that, we won't take that, because we sincerely want this house to be done. We don't want to tear this house down.
So I know the only thing savage was the edge to your walls and windows.
The windows are... The only thing that we're trying to keep is the original frame, framing of the brick. That's it. Everything else is...
Be in rain though, right now the studs are still there on some of the walls and some floor, all that's coming out.
All that's coming out. We just couldn't take it out at this time or that brick wouldn't stay up. Everything that's up right now is just to preserve that brick part. When we go in to start building up, as we're building up, it's coming down.
And there were some problems, some of the things, like there was a trailer heater, you know, and my dad's big dump truck. We removed all that problem, that will not happen again. That will be, it did not start and that's why it had some mechanical problems. Reasonably left it the timeline that we did. That will not happen again. I had that removed. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be there like that anymore. We're gonna keep it, everything uniformly, that's what we're gonna try to do, keep it like that. And not have a lot of junk just unbound, because that's not what we're into. We're into trying to get this done in the fastest way possible, the best way into the original form of the house.
And projects like this, I can't show, they did real ugly before they get proved. It is exactly as I would say right now. And we apologize for that, but it, it is, it's exactly as I would say right now.
But the apology is not to us, it's to other people in the neighborhood. They're calling me complaining and not wanting us to give you any more time, because we gave you six months. And from the naked eye, you can't really see that you've done it.
Right, well, yeah. Yeah, I can understand that. And I went to the, and like I said, I went to the neighborhood and we had a long talk and we had some, I had one guy that I, it's a friend of yours, but we had a long talk about it. And he, he, he said it was in the bathroom, and I agreed with him, and we had a long talk about it. Bob and I came to an agreement, and he said, I really would want Peyton and Brandon to leave me. He said, I, and Frankie too, because they own the house. The main houses that are in view, I've talked to every single one of them, and we both, they've come to an agreement except for one. And I promise you, those people said, we'd love to see a young couple coming here and taking this house. We don't wanna see a duplex, we don't wanna see something built up that doesn't belong in the neighborhood. And that's what would happen if we lose this house because it was built in nineteen thirty.
Do you have any idea when the cost is like then, is, are y'all aware of it? Because I, I ain't home, and I just, it might be helpful if y'all knew. If they knew what y'all do and what you're talking about, we're talking about a forty thousand dollar deal.
Right.
You don't have that type of financing.
Yes, we do. The finances is not included, but the money is not...
And we can show you.
At this point, yeah, at this point of getting it down, it was the time, that was the deal, it wasn't the finances. It was just the time of the tedious work of actually preserving that historical brick. That's what took them off this.
Do you have a billion more from the bank?
Yes, we are approved for two hundred thousand. And I think we, we only came the first hour to approve of whatever else.
And we can go do that tomorrow, I can get it down on myself. And I am proud of...
I had no email, I'm just waiting for a letter of credit, you know?
A good frame, proof of frame, a thing, that's... Done wrong, I booked till February, that was.
I see, you booked, that's what I think.
In February, y'all need assistance, I could...
If they contracted me, I can give them two dollars, a hundred dollars. If they contracted me before February, but I couldn't do it before February.
No way.
And you put any restrictions on the permit? I would say, I, I think you can, but recently they agreed to it. Man, my thing is, is I, I feel for you, I want you to do it like you're talking about. But even if you get it in the wire, let's say middle of February, of that matter to end of January. And then you stop and it'll be something, I just don't want to be stuck in there at some time, right?
I understand that completely, and I want you to understand that, honestly. If this was somebody else coming in and didn't leave this house, this house would be done by my family, bro, fifty years. This is not something that would, and when it, when it, when we went, you know, it got on fire. It was a tremendous drop for us because it happened. Because they were doing, we began to start doing extra work on the house, that's, that was, and then we had to totally turn that around. This is not somebody that's taking this lightly and is just gonna take this and do a little bit, but didn't stop. And it'd be my prob, be our problem, our prob, I can promise you that's not what's gonna happen. I mean, I'm not saying, do you think, Lord, anything happens tomorrow, I think that's... But we're the best intentioned with this. This is not something that somebody buys and they wanna make a little money off of. That's not what this house right now is for. This is the house that we live in.
What's yours for four, eight? To hear, if they set a hearing in February, we set a hearing in the later day. You'll have to, uh, start with the initial, the initial, the permit, the restrictions on, uh, the one restriction on money. It's hard, you know, get rid of that line, tell them to spend money, but if they don't pay today, it's not, it's four, we're gonna go right now on that. That's all we're doing, uh, so really, it's gonna be, you'll have to make a decision today and all of you can just say, we'll set for the word, we'll make a decision then. Do y'all, and I issue a permit?
If y'all, if y'all threw this money, y'all, you what y'all say y'all gonna do by the end of January?
That's what I'm saying.
We gonna be mobbed this house.
Right, we're gonna need it down.
Y'all understand that?
Yes.
And all the, it required by the end of January to have it framed up and in the drive, right?
But I...
Absolutely, after January, we need you to keep progress.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm just talking about the January.
They still...
They're...
Yes.
I think what Paul and Eric said and Jared said, I think you'd be better off with a different thing than that.
Thank you, Will.
And they are probably ambitious with this, but I didn't want to...
You said the permits for a hundred and eighty days?
Yes.
I mean, you can set a hearing for a hundred and eighty days from now, theoretically.
And then you could, uh, you could set, not even... Two point seven hearing?
If we, you know, so that, yeah, well, can I have framing, windows, doors, HVAC, plumbing and electrical by the end of March? This is very ambitious. Uh, you know, we set a hearing for ninety days from now, halfway through the permit, and there's not substantial progress made. You know, I think you have every right to continue with the demolition.
I was right there. Do you agree with that?
I think if there's visible progress, I'm pretty sure the neighbors that are calling me are gonna be happy with it. That's my thinking on it. I would love to give y'all the opportunity. Um, but I also, you know, I have to face y'all and I have to face the other people as well. There's, there's two different people I have to confront, two different groups. Um, but I think those people are reasonable, y'all make reasonable progress. Um, but y'all also need to know, it's kind of a gamble if you're investing the money, they can still go down, and then we're all in a bad position.
So if we set a hearing for the, for the first of March, and give them to the end of February, you have it in the drive, which is probably January, is it?
I've got a note from Woodward, and...
And, and we get to that hearing in March, they have not done that, haven't completed it. Do you think we want to issue the permit with, with restrictions, or even if they have to be, uh, what the term is?
In the drive.
In the drive by the end of it, for a lot more speed, or else the permit can be, you know, if that's stayed enough front, the permit, and they agree to it, they accept the permit that way.
That seems reasonable. A conditional permit and gives y'all double the time, you say you need to frame the house. Uh, I'm all for preserving houses, especially family homes, especially young people who live here, making effort and sure. I want that to happen, I really do.
And I would make one recommendation for sure, over communicate, over communicate with Eric. Keep people in the note, you know, just to say, okay, look, this is happening, we got this completed.
And that way when someone texts me, I can say, I just talked to them, you know, they're doing this.
Almost over communicate, because that way, like I said, when he is getting calls, we have an explanation. Not an answer and excuse, but actually an explanation.
So if they're making progress along the way in, uh, March, in, in March, you don't have a hearing, would they need to show up or just do a report or?
You'd check back the board and ask what they want here, but the hearing wouldn't fit, fit March.
Uh, we need a motion, uh, for...
I make a motion that we grant them a conditional permit and, uh, revisit the issue in March.
We would have set a public hearing for March, March, May, March fifth.
All right, set a public hearing for March fifth.
All right, I have a second, hold on.
Say it.
Say it, my Williams. Any other question, Chris?
One, one question on that. If, if we see that they're making noticeable progress before, we can... If y'all, if y'all have a hotel there, just keep... Okay, all right, I just wanted to ensure, because if they're making progress and there's an E, you should have an actual hearing and then have to come back up here. I just wanna make sure we can keep... Get it back to them. Okay.
All right, any other questions, Chris? All in favor?
Uh, any opposed? Most curious.
Uh, the closing call, one two.
Thank you so much.
We all look like you.
Uh, for five, I got it, consider all this agreement, development, eight side of the current space, and the, uh, our damn warehouse, so long. There's a thirty-five minute foot bay down there, they're improving for warehouse space, and they like to leave a full inch where it could off the space, they're gonna get the office, uh, to help with the customer sign up, ready on the Friday. Uh, this, this lease at the seven more space will be for twenty years, people match, uh, the R five release. Their name, all the improvements on that, that particular bay and, and different stuff, except they're all doing, uh, the lease for the, uh, office space. It's gonna be a monthly month lease, we anticipate that may be in a couple of years, they'll probably get their own retail space somewhere. And try to get the project off the, off the ground. Uh, Ray, have you, um, been there, turning that, like, legal or subject, and, uh, and I work for PBA folks on the term, so, and I'm confused, I always think, like, Ray, you know, they're...
But just that the, uh, the, the office space would be called March first, December.
Uh, what's with the board, the movement, Kevin Davis, you said, my Williams, we, uh, question this, cause, you know, I've been... Uh, any opposed, my two.
There's a second item, it's to further pay the questions from design services on the communication system, uh, through the past month. That's a hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars and thirty nine cents.
Uh, something, I lost my, through that, I was thinking about, that'll say, that one. Any other questions, Chris? All in favor? Uh, any opposed, my two.
Hey, the third item is to follow up, we remember understanding that, uh, board proved it named the time DP fiber. Uh, they built, uh, a line from Sherman, uh, to New Harmony to get their system across the pipeline. When they did that, uh, it's kind of safe calls for both of us, they, they put up a hundred forty-four pound fiber to cover that area for us. Uh, and this is, uh, it is all in that, in, in, you know, the amount of, uh, the structure cost is sixty-seven thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars and forty cents. We pay that time DP fiber, they, they just have some...
Uh, my, my Kevin, there, have a second. Second about, folks, any other questions, Chris? All in favor? Uh, any opposed, my two.
They have four items, uh, payment to test go, that's for the automated metering, uh, products we received during the month of December. Fifty-six thousand, one hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents.
Uh, I lost my, my, my key, any other questions, Chris? All in favor? Uh, any opposed, my two.
Here, the, the fifth item, this was, uh, immediately worked that in a, despite engineering last, this was for substation relay and control equipment that arrived here in the month of December before the substation, that's the amount of three hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred nine dollars.
Uh, those, 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 my two, second, my three. Any other questions, Chris? All in favor? Uh, any opposed?
Okay. The sixth item, this is something that, uh, the board awarded this bid back in February of twenty-three, was to make connections from the substation control lounge, different than the substation, that arrived, uh, in December. A total out of that first order was spent three hundred thirteen thousand. They still have to, uh, condition the batteries for the control lounge. There's two hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred eighty dollars, this is what we actually received and have proved for, uh, for this month.
Uh, what, my Kevin, do, have a second? Thank you, my Williams, any other questions, Chris? All in favor? Uh, any opposed, my two.
Hundred seventy, this is what he goes out, I think he just did this a few months ago, and we did, uh, him die, he requested a couple of bridges at the bar, we had to move again. And we did that out, uh, over seven, just a few months ago, when, anyway, him die, had a drug, they're feeding on, approved the project. And, uh, now they got approved, the contractor would not honor the bid, so we re-bid. Uh, this time the loan, uh, was, it's out security contractor, uh, and basically this is, this is what it is. Uh, the way that it's out, uh, put their dollar amount, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred eighty dollars. And this will be... And this will be reimbursed by time.
Uh, what's with the, most of my, most of my, most of my. All in favor?
There, also, consider your high request, uh, tell me his name is Jake Russell, he'll be, uh, my, 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 my.
Most of my parts, have a second? Second, my Keith? Any other questions, Chris? All in favor? Uh, any opposed, most of you?
Thank y'all.
Uh, meet the belt, better than. Please, Paul, can you get any, uh, uh? Carter, Ray, any, not even say the most of the, because I'm, thank you. Try to vote.
I got a couple of things, Governor Mayor Board. The first thing I want to ask for is his approval to accept the promotion for probationary firefighters, graduating the fire academy in December. And give them firefighter two, hey, it's innovative, this is normal operation. I want the board to approve this.
My Kevin Dale, second, my Williams, any other questions, Chris? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Uh, most of you?
Second thing is, it's time to go ahead and approve our annual VFSI, VFI S insurance. Which is the insurance on the ladder truck, rescue truck, engine one, the truck I drive, and all equipment inside the department for loss. Uh, we did up the coverage this year, uh, because of the rising cost of fire apparatus and fire equipment, including turnouts and everything. I think that will definitely attest to the cost of the ladder truck, one point seven million, well, I think that's as pretty as you can have for one. But we're gonna up the, uh, the truck like we drive, to replace it, would be about a million dollars. And so we upped our coverage, and that amount was, for that, is twelve thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars annually. So that's, that's a good amount. Ladder truck, probably a thousand dollars going to be, and six hundred, your workstation, and five hundred thousand on the rest of the truck. And when that's said, I get through that. So I need approval, go ahead and redo that.
My Williams, have a second? Second, my partners, any other questions, Chris? All in favor? Uh, any opposed, most of you?
And then the next one is the, uh, the engine, engine one motor. Uh, I've spoken to most of you about it, sent the information on it, uh, answered any questions along the way. The issue is, it's a two thousand and mile Pierce truck, it's got right at fifty thousand miles on it. Uh, however, the engine is failing, it's imminent, it is going to fail completely at some point. We have basically really doctored and babyed this truck all the way for the last couple of years. And now it's getting to the point where we have got to go ahead and make a commitment to replace the motor in this truck. I got two quotes on just rebuilding this motor, and then two quotes on, you know, the crank motor, a brand new motor put in it. And, um, to put a new motor in it is sixty-one thousand dollars, and that's a pump test after it gets done. With a two-year warranty, to rebuild it, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of forty thousand. This truck has got nine more years left in service for us, as what we call frontline. And I was explaining earlier, frontline basically is what we send first to a fire. It's what the ratings bureau, uh, calls our, our main trucks. And so this truck has got nine more years of life on the frontline engine. After that, it goes into reserve for twenty, twenty-five years. So it's not a bad investment for sixty thousand dollars, because the truck itself, if it's placed right now, if we had to, it'd be six hundred thousand. So, uh, what I need is, I need to.
We recommend a new one?
I am recommending a new one, and the, the low, the low bid actually is fifty-nine thousand, this bid is sixty-one, or the quote. However, the low quote did not include a pump test. And it's very important that this pump test get done with this new, with this new motor. And also, the company that did have the low bid, they were, when they started out, they were extremely low, and we questioned it. They did not actually quote everything that was needed, they don't even make this motor anymore. So this has got to go in and be adapted, it's a better motor. This is, this motor's been a headache since we've gotten in O eight, is what, it's just been, it's given us problems all along. But I do recommend the sixty-one thousand, I, the E E P quote is what I recommend.
Is that the lowest quote for long?
Um, it is, it is, because of the pump test.
Any other, Greg? You said, uh, what's with the board? Most of my Kevin Dale, have a second, my Keith? Any other questions, Chris? All in favor? Uh, any opposed, most of you?
As a side note, that's a paper out of the fire front, so it's not. And that's, that's all I have. Unfortunately, like I said, business is up for us, and that's not what we want here, but it is, so. Appreciate it, boy.
Thank you. Great department, John, you got anything? Billy, Inspector, here.
I don't have anything, I ain't never heard of it.
Uh, I'll say agenda, that's what I'm ready, send agenda. And then I get a copy of that.
He probably didn't believe that, uh, after that, I love you, it's staying from like you never said. If it's not you that was, or probably did, you just have a second to vote for it. You can do your best, so, and then you'll check that, and then you'll let it vote, and then you're certain.
Okay. On the present agenda, I have B and C is approved, number seven, twenty-two, three minutes approved, he's in the field, twenty-two, twenty-three minutes. It was approved that, I don't have any problem.
So those, those two are considered, like, does everybody?
Just go out of the way, don't, just go out of, those two, okay? All right, so approval plan, doctors, uh, December twenty-twenty-three, can have lots of room here. So, have a second? Any other questions, Chris? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? All right. Let's move to action agenda. Hold on, let's see, if somebody got any other things on film, if this. You sent the oath of offices for police officers, Paul, Sam, or PJ Door, Chad Glass, and William, Adam, and Brad, Clay, that has a deputy clerk. Have read that, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, we need to prove that, you know, okay. And most of Kevin Dale, have a second? Second, my Williams, any other questions, Chris? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Most of you? Uh, has anybody anything else, we need to smoke a good drink? Kevin Dale, Drew, all in favor? Uh, we'll be sure.